I'm gonna call to order the Bradleboro Planning Commission meeting of Monday, June 1st, 2015. And I'd like us to vote on approving minutes of May 4th. Do I hear a motion?
So...
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Alright.
Great. Passed. Announcements. I know Sue has one. We've been busy.
You may have seen in the newspaper today that Bradleboro was awarded $400,000 from the US EPA to start a brownfields program and to fund environmental assessments for properties maybe are gonna be redeveloped.
So, good for Ron, good for Sue. Good job.
Yeah, it's a big deal and it involves the planning commission as we wrote the grant, actually. So, we have $200,000 in hazardous substance money and $200,000 in petroleum money where we can hire a consultant to do environmental work for properties that are gonna be transacted. And we have to have kind of a site selection process and kind of review over the sites that come into the system or into the program. And so there's kind of two pieces to that. There is, we do need approval and kind of there's a little bit of oversight from the EPA and Vermont DEC for some of the petroleum sites as to whether or not we can use the money on those sites. But then also there's more of kind of the local decision making as to whether we think it's a good use of the funds on the site. And so, we were envisioning the planning commission serving in that role. And so obviously, we'll need to do some training.
I'm sure.
Not obviously, I meant just to assume.
Let me rephrase that. We would really enjoy it getting trained with you.
Yeah.
That was close.
So, in case you aren't aware, I should go back. Brownfields are sites that are, have real or perceived to have environmental contamination. So, whether it's to the water, groundwater, soil, air. And so what we can do with the funding is we can, just kind of three levels of environmental due diligence that you would do. So the first is called a Phase One Environmental Site Assessment and that's where there's a historic records research done and there's interviews of people who might know what happened on the property and they kind of put that information together and they try to identify any recognized environmental concerns. Sometimes you might have a site where there's nothing that gets recognized and the property will go on to be sold and, you know, everything's good. But more often than not, sites that would come into the program, there's a reason they're coming in and there's some concern. So, then there's a Phase Two where there's actual sampling that's done, so groundwater, soil, building materials, that kind of thing. And then, and then there's a third phase which would be cleanup. So, we cannot use our funds for cleanup, but we can do cleanup planning. So if we've identified environmental contamination, the consultant can work with the potential property owner based on what they want to do with the property and design ways to mitigate the impact to human health and the environment as well, so.
And it's a great boon for developers because they can do this at no cost to themselves and spur redevelopment and development in the areas where we want development because it's redevelopment.
So are you, do you have the sites in mind? Like are you aware of which sites you would guess would be using the money?
Don't have any sites targeted.
No.
Per se. But I mean, we know that there's some projects out there that, you know, maybe we speak to people to see if they needed assistance doing this work. I mean, most of the banks are requiring this for a commercial transaction anyway, at least a Phase One. And it's a good way to buy yourself some liability protection or at least put yourself in good standing to have a liability defense if you've done this work, so. Wyndham Regional Commission has had a very successful program, so it's kind of out there in the development community in the region. They've got a long track record, which I think will be useful.
Right. And there are several projects that they've been involved in that are at various stages of development. So, we can reasonably expect going forward that, you know, some of those might get finished off by Wyndham Regional or there'll be subsequent.
Work that needs to be done.
Work that needs to be done. And then, anyway, what we want to encourage people to feel is that we're open to approaches. We also have another announcement that kind of blends with this one, which is another EPA project. So we also were approached and then approved for an EPA Smart Growth Implementation Assistance Project. So, for communities in EPA Region One, which is basically New England, we're signed agreements with the EPA, so we have one. And Kingsdale is another, Bridgeport, Connecticut, and Lawrence, Massachusetts.
What does that mean?
Well, we should separate. So, those are kind of the visible communities. I'm not sure who got the Smart Growth Implementation Assistance. It's a separate thing.
Oh, you're right. I thought it was...
So this is a smart growth?
Right. Yes. So, and we targeted a particular area, the lower, for one of a better reason, for one of a better description, the lower Whetstone corridor, so roughly from Williams Street down to the Connecticut. And that's all inside a census tract 9685, which qualifies for other support and targeted strategies, including new market tax credit. So, what we're...
Does it include wanting to purchase property that is flooded?
No. So, but what, so, what we're trying to do is, with the, with the brownfields project, it's townwide. So you could be way out on Route 9, some distance from town, and be eligible for participation in the brownfields thing, or you could be right downtown. Given the pattern of land use and settlement and where we feel the redevelopment opportunities are strongest, it's probably closer to downtown or along the corridors. The Whetstone being one of those. So, there's a way in which these two projects actually kind of combine in a way, or overlap at least, I should say. They're complementary.
So with this Smart Growth Implementation Assistance that we'll be receiving, several of the planning commissioners were on the commission several years ago when we had the two consultants that did some work on protecting our rural areas. So it's when we worked on the subdivision, when we started kicking that off and we talked about different strategies to preserving the more rural parts of town. So this is similar to that. They'll come and do a workshop and they have, the EPA hires their consultants to do the work. So we're looking at probably October or November for this kind of work. And basically what we want to look at is how can we encourage economic activity in this area while respecting that it's floodplain, but yet it's...
This is your first sale or realtor, it's your source, and what is that? I think it's in our department of wetlands recreation section.
Yep.
So Sue, you'll be working directly with the EPA or is there a state entity that's also involved?
So, there is a state entity. DEC is involved. So we have kind of a, for the brownfields...
For the brownfields pot, yeah.
Yeah. We have a cooperative agreement with the EPA and so they have a project officer and they're pretty, they're pretty hands-on. I mean, they're very helpful. Hands-on and...
That's great.
And then, but Vermont DEC will also have kind of a project manager for any site that's in the brownfields program. And they review the work and they kind, they're the ones that get the final say on the work that's been done.
They're the ones that sign off on the Phase One?
They don't sign off on the Phase One, but they sign off on, they approve the work plan for any testing that's gonna be done. And they, they also kind of, they approve any cleanup planning that's gonna be done. So, they're really involved in what's gonna happen on the site.
So they're really...
Whether or not the testing is satisfactory and...
They're the ones that'll sign off on the program, but the EPA administers it.
They help us administer it.
Right.
They have some oversight on the work plan as well. I mean, they can definitely...
Do we want to talk about that planning part? That's where I was going with the connection with the SGA, I think.
Okay.
That we've got resources.
I'm curious to know what this one does.
Which one's this one?
The SGA.
Right, okay. So the idea there was that you're dealing with the lower, the lower reaches of the Whetstone Brook. And one of the challenges that we're encountering is that subsequent to Hurricane Sandy, there's been a series of high-level policy changes in the federal government. And there's been an executive order issued which has not been promulgated into rules yet, but it's under consideration for rulemaking. And each of the large federal agencies that would have an exposure to the executive order have been asked to develop their own guidance for dealing with spending federal resources in mapped floodplains. So, part of the challenge that we have is that in a community such as ours with a fairly limited real estate, private real estate market, we crucially depend, as do many other communities right across the country, on public funds to help turn a development project into a viable activity. And in that process, we typically depend on dollars that originate with HUD through, in Vermont, through the Vermont Community Development Program, which are HUD funds. HUD has made it pretty clear at this point that their guidance is that they won't support the use of their money in mapped flood fringe or floodway areas, which would include this area of the lower Whetstone. So, what we're trying to do with the EPA is work on some workshops that would really, and other material that would really help us understand what the likely implications of this new federal funding framework are gonna be. And then look at alternative strategies for developing areas that are impacted by natural hazard as well as are impacted by socioeconomic factors as well, which certainly characterizes the lower Whetstone. So that's what that project is about. We're really trying to problem solve how to go about redeveloping neighborhoods in an appropriate way in this new world of limited or highly constrained federal funding sources. So that is a planning exercise primarily. And then, we also have some planning resources as part of the brownfield project as well. So we can blend those two things and focus our attention on the same area, or at least, you know, and then it also, timing-wise, it coincides with, once we've put the land use regulations to bed and they're adopted, we'll be turning our attention to the first master plan for the downtown. So each one of these things will also build on each other. And that's the overall work plan.
That's great.
Yeah, so Sue, make sure I'm understanding the smart element of this is basically how do we not abandon that area without the HUD money?
Right, so you could...
Like how do we, how else, how else can we...
Right, right. To draw a really vivid picture.
We have a potential...
Correct. You could imagine any, lots of different parts of the country where due to poor economic conditions...
Right, and pulling out of...
And pulling out of federal, federal support, neighborhoods are abandoned.
Okay, so the smart, okay, so the smart growth element of this, this is close to downtown and so we're wanting to, you know, have the redevelopment of that area. So that's the smart growth element of it.
And we don't want to do it in any way that could be perceived as dumb.
Right.
Right. At least above average is what we're like, okay?
Must be Italian.
Right. So, yeah.
So the smart growth part of it is just that it's close to downtown?
Yeah. Yeah. And I mean, it's responding to the floodplain and so, and, you know, how to be resilient. Yeah.
There's a movement that's more obvious to some extent in areas that were directly impacted by Sandy where they go by names like Resilient by Design and so forth. So in bigger, primarily urban communities and certainly coastal communities, and it's a worldwide movement to some extent. So it's in recognition of climate change. It's in recognition of the impact that really large-scale events like that can have. There's a whole package of community planning approaches that attempt to address how you would make communities more resilient to natural hazard and also the economic consequences of failing to be resilient to natural hazard. And so I think that's the direction of that smart growth-inspired work. And happily because of our history of land use in the same area dealt fairly well with the brownfields project, so we feel like we can blend these two projects in a pretty effective way.
Thank you.
I have one more question about the smart growth one. Is there a, I probably could read this and learn it, but is there, is there an implied intent, you know, how it would be to use, like would it be used more for, I heard like the word nape word thrown around, so would it be used more, the intent to like, to use it for rehabilitating residential structures or is it just broader than that?
It's not intended to purchase land or purchase buildings or give financial resources to property owners directly. It's a planning process. So it's to explore appropriate approaches at the neighborhood scale, I would say, to respond. And I think, one of the things that I think catches the EPA's imagination is that we're conscious that the federal rules are changing, they're conscious it's changing too, and they can't give a definitive answer. So, it turns into kind of a case study for them to explore what are the consequences of HUD, for instance, saying, "We're out of here." Right? Which is a fairly understandable response, given that they don't want the ongoing responsibility of people being housed in hazardous areas. On the other hand, their money can get used for whole lots of different things, not just Or it can be for housing that might be less vulnerable. But their blanket kind of, "We're out" really presents communities such as us with really big challenges about how to actually do something meaningful in those neighborhoods without resources all of a sudden.
So it sounds like it's maybe a dialogue.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think, you know, some design as well. And I think when I look at the area, I see some different neighborhoods. So, you know, Frost Place, there might be different things that can happen there, like, you know, and then the residential part of Frost Street. And then, obviously, as it moves closer to downtown, it changes a bit.
And sometimes those changes can be really subtle and fairly minor and sometimes it will, you know, the, the approach might have to be much more dramatic. And, you know, Bradleboro hasn't ventured into that kind of arena before, but you can think of, remember again, that what's unique about us to some extent is that we're rural, we're small and we're relatively poor. And we're not talking about large numbers of people. But if you're talking about parts of Long Island or parts of New Jersey, like Hoboken and so forth, they got really massive projects of relocating people out of hazardous areas. And so for them, it is, these are very large-scale projects and they do present them with real big challenges. I think it's in, we're glad that they picked us and we're glad that we're gonna be a case study, but it's at the other end of the spectrum for them, from what they're normally used to, is what I'd say.
I have a friend whose job it is in New Jersey to figure out ways to raise the railroad tracks out of the flood in, you know, and there's a ton of them. That's one of the problems in Hoboken.
Right, the road, yeah.
Sandy King, all the trains were flooded.
Right.
Can we just go back to the other grant for a second? I wanted to...
Yeah, I didn't mean to. You, maybe you're probably sure to blend them, but...
That's fine. Anyway, I just wanted to read this sentence from the letter, because I think it's really great. "The town of Bradleboro submitted an outstanding grant proposal and we deeply appreciate the tremendous commitment of time and energy that went into its preparation." Get that on the record.
Yeah.
So how much is, how much is the EPA Smart Growth one?
There's no dollar amount on that because they, they have like a list of contractors and they put it out to bid. And so, we don't, it's not like a financial award to us. It's, so we don't know.
It's like a coupon.
I mean, I think it's up to like 50 or something.
I think it has kind of a street value of around $50,000 with no contribution from us.
So not handing a supporting check and saying, "Go shop."
No.
No, no. We are welcomed into their store.
But we'll, we'll work with them on a scope of work. I mean, probably relatively soon. And like I said, we're looking at October, you know, it's gonna be fall for the Smart Growth Implementation Assistance. And same with the brownfields assessment program, that money does not become available till October 1st. So there's a lot that we need to do to get, get the agreement in place, but we actually would not be able to start assessing properties till after October.
Right. So yeah, for the brownfields thing, we have fairly large amounts of information and Sue's And so we feel like we've got enough time to build the beginnings of the system. And with the other, to some extent, it's some people in common within the EPA that are involved in both things. So we've got some overlap there in terms of personnel. And then, you know, pretty close awareness of what's going on, that we feel we can negotiate the details of that scope of work between now and October as well, and then have them both roll pretty much at the same time. And then on top of that, by May of next year, we would know, for instance, if we've got municipal planning grant funding, right? When's that?
Oh, yeah.
Before then?
That's due...
Due in September.
Due in September, we've no, no evidence.
Okay. So yeah, by the end of this calendar year, that's true, we would know whether we got municipal planning grant support for doing the downtown master plan. So we're looking at, already have opportunities to fund the master plan for downtown.
So there's life after the zoning?
Yes.
What was that done?
I think it's vacation.
The brownfields is total of 400,000. It's about 200,000, 200 for hazardous substance, 200 for petroleum. And the majority, I mean, probably at least 180 out of each pot's gonna go towards assessment.
Right. Yeah, so it's about 9.8 or just under 10% kind of administrative budget and the rest is, goes out the door in the form of contracts with consultants.
And like typically, a Phase One assessment is, would cost somebody, you know, around $3,500. Phase Two can really range. I mean, some of the projects, I think that we assessed the property, the town did before Church Street, the land for the fire station expansive, expansion was bought and Wyndham Regional Commission, it went through their program, I think it was like $50,000 to...
That was the spot where that laundry mat?
Yeah. I mean, that's, that's pretty expensive for that site, but, I mean, you can really run anywhere from 15 to 20 grand way...
Dito Street was about 48, right?
Yeah, Dito Street made it more.
More.
Somebody else is developing, you know, the state's developing the testing protocols, so the developer's required to do one.
Sure.
Right. And it's, it's intensive and it takes skills and there's a lot of documentation that goes on. So it's not, it's not small, but it's not, you know, you know, I wanna say the one we bought from Pine One was 48 and there was another one.
Maybe there was more testing down there, yeah, so.
Is the brownfields all within this Whetstone corridor?
No, the brownfields is planned, it's townwide.
So it really means like eight or 10.
Two different, maybe. Two different things that's somewhat related.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. I mean, you know, it sounds like a lot of money, it is a lot of money and we're very excited, but you could eat through that with that handful of projects.
Yeah.
Do you have any other announcements?
Not as good as those two.
Those are just announcements, huh? So, a couple more. Tomorrow night, the Select Board is having a second town plan, second public hearing on the town plan amendment for the...
F on the agenda, right?
Yeah. There's a couple of things on there.
We, we, we're at several different points on the agenda.
Yeah. So that's, and they're also gonna vote on amending the town plan. And if they vote in favor of it, then the next question they'll pick up is whether or not to approve us making an application for West Bradleboro Village Center designation. So, we need to have an adopted town plan that has certain, the certain language in it. If we have that, then we can apply, but they need to take action on that, so. That's not a major option.
And they have, they've been briefed on frozen content.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, do you need commissioners in attendance?
I don't believe that the town plan amendment or the West Borough Village Center designation will draw the need for planning commissioners. And are you thinking that you're gonna be there for the light show? The one, the land use regulations at the end?
Oh, I thought we were done.
It's never done.
So, tomorrow night, there also is a presentation on the design standards.
Well, this is the last one?
Yeah.
Well, what, it was, yeah. So, we thought it was the last one.
Oh.
And then over the weekend, there was some correspondence between me and David Gattenstein and there's interest in having a presentation that highlights the difference in the permitted and conditional uses by zoning districts, the difference between the existing ordinance and the proposed land use regulations, which, I think, has come up as a question from the Select Board and I think it's a pretty straightforward thing to illustrate, because I don't believe there's huge changes. And generally, where there are changes, we have relaxed things a little bit more, but it's that way. So, we've increased, for the most part, we've increased the number of permitted and conditional uses, if you like, in return for more explicit or slightly stricter standards for both in the performance or sometimes aesthetics. And then where we are much clearer about, you know, dropping uses out of either permitted or conditional, there's a clear connection back to the purpose statement of the zoning district that makes that clear. So, I think the way to think about the old ordinance is that over time, people kept on throwing things in because they kept on encountering...
What about this?
Obstacles. And this seems like a good idea, right? And so there would demand and demand and demand and things got added in. And so, part of the problem kind of leads to that spaghetti effect of everything just being kind of a mess is it is fairly difficult to distinguish at this point between one zoning district and another, given the listed permitted and conditional uses. So as it's a little cleaner and clearer, and partly just because it's fresh, I don't think these charts are gonna be necessarily scintillating to look at. They could actually be pretty confounding to put together, but, you know, we'll do it.
So there may be another.
So there'll probably be another presentation, so.
But there is one tomorrow.
It's definitely one tomorrow. But anyhow.
Yeah, this was one that was on the agenda.
Yeah, this one was always there. So...
Is there a, then, was there a timeline for us beginning to have our own public hearing on the, on zoning? Have we set that up?
I think we're gonna talk about that.
Oh, okay.
Item E2.
You're really good at it.
Yeah.
Okay. So, any other announcements?
Oh, last one is, we have a draft memo on the aesthetic review of the Technology Drive Solar project. I haven't, haven't, haven't had a chance to read it yet, but I can scan it.
What's it from?
Dan Ongold.
It's from...
The guy that was here the last time.
It's from a, it's, yeah. So it's from...
Well, it was done by TJ Boyle.
TJ Boyle, who do the aesthetic impact work for Winston Lane. I'm gonna try to be nice. And I would just emphasize that it's a draft memo that's internal to, that people involved in putting together the project. So I'm not entirely sure what status it has, but if people are interested...
What, they sent it to you then?
Exactly. I mean, I'm not...
I don't know. He dropped it off when I was out of the office.
Not entirely sure what the purpose of it is.
And does it reflect the comments that we and the Wyndham Regional Commission have given them about sustainability of the property?
It's a part of the two projects we looked at a couple meetings ago. The one on tech, and then the one on it...
I'll scan it for you and, and email it to anybody that's interested. I can mail it to anybody that wants a copy.
So we can...
It is here.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, there's no public comment, so let's begin on the direct rent, land use regulations and, first, there's an update on the average.
So, tired of talking already. So we had, we've been having meetings with the Select Board, so it wasn't right, we jumped in.
Okay.
Since, basically, all of May.
That's the average? I'm sorry.
Yeah.
You're right. Okay. It didn't feel like that, but that's...
Yeah.
Well, it was very interesting. You know, because you, you see the reaction to the Select Board, which is represented
Well, you see the reaction to the select board, which is representative of what the reaction to the town as a whole would be to, although, you know. There's been, they're involved.
There's been no public in attendance, but the select board has been extremely engaged and interested in asking questions. So that's, that's been really good.
Can they help identify issues that they might have? Um, in broad terms, they're interested to make sure that the necessary level of flexibility to allow people appropriate courses of action to develop their land as they see fit are protected. I think we've done well to explain how we imagine that is preserved as a right. And then there's been detailed questions about the particular effect of various, you know, measures contained in the land use regulations, particularly around design standards. I think we've had for, well, not so much design standards, but the description of the new neighborhood centers and the mixed use district and commercial development standards in general. And I think the last meeting.
Last meeting, we talked about the different review processes.
We took, yeah, at length about the PED process. That went well.
That did go well. I mean, they're conscious though, that there are people out there who have not submitted comments yet. And they're. No, I mean, it's open. I mean, they, I think they're.
Yeah, it's open until it's not. I mean, so.
I think that will make itself clear when we talk about the timeline.
So I mean, I think there, there seemed to be interest in the PED template approach, but they're also, they think that there's other people out there with different thoughts, so.
Yeah, I'd say there was a lot of interest in the approach that we're taking to the PED section. And, you know, I think there's, you know, yeah, they're interested to see what other people's feedback on it is. And then the last thing, which I think is important for us to all remember, is always this desire partly born out of familiarity with a particular parcel or a particular building or even a corner or something that people want to work through the issues at a parcel level. And so that sometimes can be useful and it can, it can illustrate some aspects of the overall land use regulations. But it's important to be able to communicate very clearly why we, it's, the outcome of the land use regulations is not the cumulative effect of looking at every individual parcel. And it couldn't be from a realistic standpoint and it shouldn't be from a rule drafting standpoint either. So, you know.
It's really the opposite of that.
Right.
Yeah.
Because we don't zone to land owner.
No. And so it's just important to remember ways of communicating that in a way that's affirmative and positive, but makes clear that it's just not a project that you can do at that scale. We might reveal certain issues that need to be addressed or explored more deeply, but it's not something that's responsive, if you like, at that, to that scrutiny all the time. It just doesn't work that way. And so the last part that's related to that is the test for economic use is established through case law and other material. You know, can you, you know, after we've made this rule change, can property owners still continue to derive economic value from their land? Not just the way I imagined it or just the way I was last year. It's can you do it at all? So to put it into a sort of a blunt scenario, if we're saying that a certain kind of commercial use is going to, because of the zoning district change, that is going to be no longer a permitted or conditional use in that district. Then that parcel is grandfathered in as long as it stays active. If it sells or it becomes dormant for two years or more, then it has to conform to the new regulations, which means that might no longer be a viable way of extracting economic value from that parcel. But it doesn't mean say it has no value. It's just the way changes could change up or it could change down. And there's, we're not in the business of guaranteeing people a return on their land or return on their investments or any kind of uses they can conceive of in the future. And so we need to be careful to communicate that again in ways that are constructive and thoughtful about the very idea of land use control in the first place.
Which is to benefit the town as a whole.
Right.
Protect neighborhoods as a whole.
Right. And to, and by doing so, you're actually ensuring and protecting and stabilizing the economic value of all properties, right? Right? Because implicit in the assumption of I want to be able to do what I want to do, it's discounting or ignoring what the potential impacts might be on surrounding land uses that then need to be mitigated. And so they could be the ones that bear the damage, not you. So that's, I mean, it's an educational point that it is important as we, we will get onto it later on. But I think that those are the kinds of things that we need to pay attention to. And I'm happy to hear your feedback on how to approach those kind of things.
Has there been any comment about limiting the zoning districts on Putney Road down to three?
No.
Well, actually, there was a complimentary comment.
Yes.
Oh, good.
Because, you know, it used to be like a little rabbit war on uses, so.
I like that you guys don't count the compliments.
That's what I do. I don't say anything. I just count the comments.
That's good.
Yeah.
Yeah, need to remember that part too.
Yep. It's true. I think, yeah, the simplification has attracted some positive feedback. Anything else from the outreach?
We haven't, we haven't really, you know, the, the public hasn't been coming to them. I think hopefully they're watching. We haven't really received.
We haven't received any written comment recently?
But if we, if we go to the timeline, I think we'll probably find out when the public will comment.
Yeah. Well, of course, we're open for public comment now.
Anytime. Yep.
Yes.
Well, they can line up behind the microphone.
Okay. So do you want to move on to the timeline then?
Sure. So we don't have anything firm because we haven't really been talking with the select board about their plans and when they might like to see it for their public hearings. But I guess conceptually, we are hoping that we can have a final draft for the planning commission to review prior to the July 6th meeting. So you'll have some time with it.
That'll be in the term.
Okay. So to have a draft for the July 6th that we'll feel comfortable approving and the planning commission putting to public hearings. That's kind of what we're aiming for. And I need to speak with, well, Brandy knows that's kind of where we'd like to go. I need to get back to her with.
So if that's the date, then when would, the next is our public hearings?
Yeah, we need to have public hearings. We have a 15 day warning for public hearings. I think we're only required to have one.
Right. But we probably, we think.
That feels a little, for, for the mass of this document and the, we think there should be more than one.
So we've been kicking around in the office and we're also happy to take feedback from you guys. Exactly how you'd go about structuring maybe two public hearings.
If you have two public hearings, so you have a 15 day warning, can you warn them both at the same time? Maybe like a month apart or something? You don't have to rewarn for a second one or?
And this is also one of those instances where as long as it's agreeable to the commission here and we can find the right dates, we can insert an extra date. So we could have, you know, as a special meeting, we can hold a public hearing on the land use regulations and set it on a date that wasn't a regular planning commission meeting night. For all we know, there is this massive tent and bowling convention on every Monday night when we're doing this and that's why none turns up.
So we need to have it on another night.
Right. Or, you know, yeah, exactly.
I think a different night and a different week.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because you, you're going to get summer vacation.
Right. Yeah.
I would also do one on weekend if you're going to do two. So do one in the evening and one on a weekend day or something. So you're just making sure you're covering like the broadest spectrum of, you know, people's work schedules and such. I think that would be good conscience.
Okay.
I'm curious if something.
No, I think, well, I would like to keep it to two, but yeah.
I mean, if we tried Saturday.
Saturday's fine with me.
What if we could?
What, what kind of publicity has this been getting that people would even be aware that this process is going on? There will be an article on the P.
Yeah, actually, that's the other thing that we should mention under outreach. We haven't discussed it yet. We want to explore the possibility of running a series of articles roughly following the presentations we've given to the select board. Because we figured that the way those have kind of been broken out, they're, I'm not allowed to use the word natural, but they're, they're fairly good, well-sized presentations that we feel that we can wrap in terms of articles that could end up in something like the Reforma. So, but to get back to your question, so that's also one of the things that we're thinking of between now and the public hearings for the select board. But to get back to your question, we use all the, we're required to do a warning, which is a fairly dull thing and an old fashioned and traditional thing. But it's, we post literally like the 1400s, post notices at various key places around town. We've put the announcements in on a high bridle.
They've been on Ibradlboro. There's been, you know, there's been recap of the select board meetings on Ibradlboro.
I love the idea of you getting some articles into the comments or the reformer of both and, you know, doing, doing some things to, to help. I feel like there is just very little general awareness of this going on. And it would be good to.
To do another round.
I mean, there, I mean, you know, it's as like fun as it is, like this room full of people.
We can't even assign how the future of Bradlboro is going to be. I think that there's something about actually letting people know that we're doing this and like inviting their comments in a way that actually lets them know that, you know. Well, we can, I mean, we do have a mass email list from the first round of outreach back in January and February. And that, that did get a lot of press. It had radio. It had, it had, you know, we taped staff and the attendance was still not that great.
I just, but in good conscience though, like I feel like for something this important.
Push it up.
I feel like there needs to be an effort, a real effort to get it publicized in a way that is going to get beyond the people who are looking for those posted notices, you know? And yeah, just on a community, I don't know, involvement at all.
I think the idea of an article that summarizes each of the presentations that you've made to the select board, because those were very pinpointed areas.
Right.
That's not quite the right word, but.
They're focused.
Focused areas. And, and I think, and even though some of them have happened already, that would be, you could do a series of articles that both go in the reformer and I think the comments, especially because that starts soon. You could start, begin with the first one, you know? And say, this is part of a series to inform about the proposed thing that we'll be wanting your, we want your input on.
You could also use it as a way to refer people to the, the planning site if they're curious about more. And that's how I found that.
Right. And, you know, we did a pretty, our email distribution lists for the early phase of public outreach were substantial, you know?
So that's going to draw to.
I think the foundation for the, yeah, for the, yeah, before the, the basement of this. I also think it's important to discuss, you know, the zoning as an outgrowth of the town plan and all the input that we had in getting to the town plan and the experts that came in and.
Right.
That whole educational.
We've been careful to remind the select board of that's how we get to where we are.
Yeah.
Right. And that part's been good, actually.
That would be good to have at the beginning of the article too.
At the beginning of each installment, because they're coming in late.
Right. Right.
I'm sure it's a real clipping.
I think, you know, this is not, we've been puzzled by the level of public participation. But I think it's one of those things, just from our experience, the rest of the time in the office, is that people have a rough sense that it's in play, but don't have any need to know in more detail until they want to go and do something.
Yeah.
So you want to buy a property, you want to change a property, then that's how you, that's how you'll find this in the first place. So we think that for the most part, it's a little bit outside most people's range of, you know, experience and what they could even imagine doing. And so.
Yeah, honestly, I mean, for a residential homeowner, the setbacks really are changing. If you live in a residential neighborhood.
Nothing's really happening, you know?
There's not, not much of a change. You know, we spoke with people at the farmer's market. That's kind of what they were interested in.
I agree. I think just, I think your idea about posting those articles in those chunks is a great, a great way to handle this. The people who are interested in getting a little more information finding out, is this something I should be paying attention to more, be involved with more now? So let's go over, not necessarily a schedule set in stone, but just kind of a, these are the steps and when you think they might occur.
So it would be this month that we'd be looking to do, you know, get, get some more press.
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah. So July 6th is our July meeting. So the idea would be to have the draft that the planning commission can kind of sign off on, at least to take to public hearings. It's not set in stone. Do we, do we vote on that as like voting to adopt it essentially as a commission or?
Put it to public hearing.
Okay.
And so you would vote to, so at the risk of sounding really uptight, there's different terms. So the planning commission will hold its public hearings, we think now too. The clause of the second public hearing, the planning commission would be present and there would be a vote to approve the draft land use regulations document and forward it to the select board for their consideration. And then when it gets to the select board, they'll hold their public hearings, we think it'll also probably be two. And they will adopt it at the end of their process so that it becomes effectively the law of the town.
Unless they send it back.
Unless they send it back. Right.
Or adopt it with certain changes to make.
Different strands. They can just change it and not refer it back to the planning commission?
Rude, huh?
A little bit.
We don't recommend that.
A little bit rude.
I would find that to be particularly rude.
Not unheard.
Unless they're very minor.
Not unheard of.
Spelling mistakes are okay. That's one of my pet peeves. Honestly, is when you have like a group of volunteers that have made a concerted effort to work on something and then have people who actually have had a cursory look at it, make decisions.
Right.
Anyway.
We'll, we'll try and avoid that.
Okay.
Just for that, that very reason. Now I'm very afraid.
So our public hearings, sometime after July 6th, there'll be two of them and they'll be 15 day warnings. So will we be finished with them by September or?
Oh, I would hope the end of July is what we're.
Yeah. Yeah. So one of them, one of them will be our August meeting or no?
It could be, I mean, it could be. And that would be fine. I mean.
I always thought that was the last one.
Yeah. And this is where we need to kind of talk to the select board and figure out where, when do they want this to come? I mean, because, you know, we could have public hearings and feel like we need to make some tweaks.
Right.
I mean, we need to leave time for that.
It's a little premature to book select board time now before we've had the public hearing experience ourselves. I think within reason, we can't, we, we need to conclude the two public hearings that we were going to have and then, then look to the question of when we would ask the select board to take it up. The select board's aware of what needs to happen and a rough window. So we started off this project of getting the new land use regulations adopted with the idea that we would get them adopted by late July, early August. And it now seems realistic for various reasons that it's slipping from August to September, which we're not.
September for them?
Yes. Yes.
Because we want to make it before the budget starts again.
Right. Exactly.
To next year's budget, yeah.
And there's some benefits to some extent for them to do it in September. Partly to do with who's around, you know, they'll have, you know, August is going to be tough to get a crowd. So, but they won't want to push it much beyond, they won't want to push it beyond September at all because there's enough else on. So there's, there's a lot of other, they give, nothing else going on. Right. Sorry. It all smushed up.
So should we attempt to pick these public meeting dates tonight so that we can just, we can just be ready to roll?
You can put them in the articles too then if you're starting to.
I think it's premature to put them in the articles.
Yeah. I think that's a different opportunity. Yeah, I think that's a different opportunity for a different publicity style.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, they'll definitely, we'll get articles.
Excuse my standing.
No, that's fine, that's good.
So, I mean, if we approve to like forward move on the draft, or, yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, you know, I mean, looking at the calendar and just knowing that we need a little bit of time to get it into the reformer and stuff, I actually think that what Rachel had suggested might actually be the best case. So maybe we could have one in the last week of July and then one at our Monday, August, whatever, meeting.
Actually, not just ending, if you lift that piece of paper, that's right, you're beautifully positioned to do this complicated thing. Ta-da, right.
Yeah, there we go. So we could go Monday, August 3rd and possibly like, I don't know, if we did a Saturday or something.
How about the farmer's market?
What would be a public hearing?
Yeah.
Hi, you know, just going back to what, you know, I kind of feel like our meetings are on Monday night and at any point, anyone who's interested could be coming to any one of these. So I kind of feel like if we're picking two days, it should not be our meeting so that there's an opportunity for, like, if it happens to be that Monday night is the problem, then...
But we're gonna schedule another one, though. I feel like it's different because it's gonna be particularly publicized and, you know, advertised.
People will come out if they want to.
I think if we do one Monday, a regular meeting, and then the other one is a Saturday, that's fairly unusual, enough to attract a different crowd.
So July 20th?
We could do July 20...
July 20th we can't do. We won't make the 15-day. It would have to be the week of July 27.
So, well, could we do Saturday, the 25th of July?
Uh, possibly, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't like that.
You don't like that?
Seven, fourteen, fifteen. I have to say, I understand the, I understand the desire for kind of having a public hearing on and off. I just don't know about how Saturday in the summer is.
Yeah, Saturday's only everybody's at a town.
I get, like, if it was the fall, like, totally before Saturday, I'm just not sure in the summer.
You know, Wednesday's quite a departure from Monday.
It's a lot different, that's true.
I mean, if the reason that people aren't coming here is because of...
The bowling.
The bowling on Mondays, you know.
What is happening?
We did town, we did town plan once on weekdays and...
What do we do to the teakai tomorrow, college events? Does that have like, I don't know, any people?
Yeah.
It was like Monday.
I think we don't wanna do six o'clock. We might wanna do public hearings at seven almost later.
Yeah, I think so. Especially given someone.
Yeah, I still think, I agree, two weekends, I mean, two weekday nights, one on Monday or one...
How is your feeling about it? Kate, still pumping for your Saturday?
No, I, my suggestion was just doing something during the day.
Oh.
During the day.
During the day, right.
We could do. I mean, it's no sweat of our back to come in here and have a public hearing if commissioners can make it.
You know, four o'clock.
We need an evening one, but yeah, we could try a...
Yeah, four o'clock, I bet.
When we tried...
Twenty o'clock, or a meeting in... Or do a Monday one, you know, at the hospital and they work like a shift. You know, it's the same, it's the same timeframe for people who have jobs that go through the dinner, like, evening hours. So I think if we did a daytime one, I wouldn't say four, I would say 10 or nine or something.
Yeah, right, because you're either doing like a three to eleven shift.
Right.
Or you're doing a seven to three, right?
Yeah.
Or something.
So, yeah, morning.
I think if we're gonna do a daytime one, let's have it before, yeah.
You wanna do two in one day and those will be the two?
No, I think we need to separate them.
Yeah, because they'll be, particularly this time of year, there'll be people out of town for the entire week, you know, it's that kind of...
Yeah, I think they need to be at least a week apart.
Yeah.
And not...
Morning, you could do coffee and bagels or something.
For a public...
I thought you were gonna say you could do it in Toronto, but okay.
So Monday, so one, so one would be August 3rd at our regular meeting and then doing a Thursday morning one or something?
About like the 29th of July on a Wednesday morning.
Yeah?
The 29th of July.
The one, yeah, okay, and we don't have to hold it here either.
And do you need all of us to be present or a certain number of us?
That was a radical move.
I know, I was about to do that.
We started with May. And we need to look ahead to August, so.
So I was always like, "Come back."
July, I'm sorry.
Wednesday and July 29th.
But then it's not a whole week till August 3rd.
It's okay, it's a different, it's a different week.
We do a Friday morning, I think, huh? Wednesday morning.
I think Friday morning's a good, good morning.
How many people can come on Wednesday morning, July 29th?
You might be able to. What time would it be? Would it be eight thirty or would it be more like ten?
Four, that's all of us that you, Rachel.
Which is a great time.
Boy.
A Wednesday morning?
Yeah.
Oh, I...
She's like a ten.
Ten, ten.
Why don't you just say what you'd like?
She just doesn't want me there.
I really don't care. I really could be there.
And he's not even that one.
Now that you've put it, Rachel can't.
Bagels and hot dogs?
Not for a public hearing.
Okay.
We could do...
If they're not gonna be nice to us, we don't...
So 10:00 AM on the 29th and then the other one on our regular meeting?
I'll be there if I can organize it.
We can have munchkins and we can say, "Okay, that's a nice comment, I'm gonna lunchkin."
Oh, no, we don't wanna get into that.
We usually do.
That dog training rewards.
That's funny.
Okay, okay.
And we'll do 7:00 PM for our public meeting. Do we wanna get six? Do we have meeting things we need to do before that or...
No, I think we should just do the one thing. So what was the, so the 29th at 10:00 AM and then the 3rd?
August 3rd at 7:00.
Yeah. But we've done them at 7:00 in the past, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that just our regular meeting?
Yes, just later.
Okay, so we would not have to be here until 7:00.
We could come early and do our regular business if we have to.
Yeah.
Our regular business.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, then Monday, the 3rd, that's our...
And that gives you time to warn both of them and...
All right, so, now, are people clear enough about what, so, so what we would propose at this point is that the process that the planning commission goes through to establish in the end that we've received all the public comment that we're gonna get in the planning commission phase. So, following the August 3rd meeting, assume that there's comments that may lead to, you know, changes in the language, right? Then staff will need some time to research and investigate those changes and make them. So, it's difficult without knowing how major they're gonna be at this point, but assuming that they're not that major, um...
Should we be checking with Brandy before we meet these dates?
What'd you say? We'll check him then.
We'll check.
I said, should we be checking with Brandy before we meet?
Yeah, if these don't work for her at all, we'll let you know, but I think it's okay. I think we're far enough out where she can move things around a little bit.
I think this month was busy, but after...
Yeah, I think she's cooling down for her, July, August, so...
So you're gonna, you're saying that we should meet again to finalize anything within the month of August?
It depends on a range of suggested changes. So if by 9:00 PM on August the 3rd, we're conscious that there have been really...
Conscious at all.
Well, first of all, conscious, and then aware that there's been some pretty big things said about the land use regulations that we need to check in on. So in other words, you as a group, as a planning commission, are not comfortable with voting on it and approving it on the night of the 3rd, then we need to make those changes.
Let's set a tentative date now that we can always cancel, but as the summer proceeds, we can have this date on our calendar.
Oh, and an additional day in August in case that happens.
So I would, I would recommend that under those circumstances, the 17th, and I'm hoping that it's a family event that I've been missed by doing that. So...
I suggest August 10th, because that's...
So let's tentatively say the 17th?
August 17th.
Yeah, August 17th.
At 6:00 PM.
Right.
I won't be there.
I just have to try to get a beat on when the Winston and Proudey Board meeting is. Like, what, it's a, it's a Monday.
It's definitely tentative. So Eric, we could meet on your boat?
I'll go to Ontario with it.
Oh.
Really, we can meet on...
Feeling, actually.
It's probably not legal to meet out of the country.
July 6th, I'll be on the Champlain canal.
We'll warn it.
That's a, that's a pretty close, I reckon.
Two hours.
Yeah.
All right, so you're out July 6th and Rachel's out July 6th.
And I think I may be out July...
No, July 6th?
Oh, no, sorry.
July 6th.
July 6th, I'm away.
I'm away July 6th, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, I might not be able to come on July 6th either.
Actually, maybe the easiest thing to do here is, can each of you, it's just becoming really clear to me, can each of you just let us know, say, between the end of school, for those of you who are in that phase, and the end of summer, what you're, when you're totally not here?
He expects us to already know.
I have no idea.
No.
I'm here.
If you know some of what you're not, yeah.
If you know... I know for sure I'm here July 6th. That part I knew.
Okay, so what, just what you do know right now, and then you can, if you want, you can update this as you know more.
I'm here.
I am also here.
Not sending you email, I'm telling you now.
Okay.
I'm here.
Yeah, I'm...
Don't say "book" because...
Yeah, because Eric's gonna get excited.
I'm in a different road.
I am stuck in the same truck.
I'm not gonna tell you yet.
I'm in a landboat.
Yeah, I'm going up and down the hill in the same truck every day.
July 24th, 25th.
Yeah, the road for me.
Okay, just send it to us, because it's now, my brain's nothing. So, um, I think very early computer, so, um, okay.
So did I just hear that we would, we are not gonna have a meeting on July 6th because there's not enough...
No, you didn't hear that.
You didn't hear that.
Okay.
Because if two people are out, we'll still have a quorum.
Yeah, we just need to make sure that we have a quorum.
Right now it's...
I thought I just heard four people saying they weren't gonna be here on Doris.
Raise your hand if you're not gonna be here July 6th.
Three people.
Can the rest of you come?
Yeah.
You might be able to be here. My mother's having surgery and I just don't know how, where she'll be in that process by then. I might be able to be back here.
And we just wanna remind that Kate's gonna be here. Are you upset about, is there something you would like to be?
It's already after 7:00, I was hoping...
Are you a candidate?
Yeah.
Well, that was, yeah, right.
Uh, can we go back to the August 17th date? Because we sort of segued back to July. I can't be here.
You can.
Cannot, probably.
You said you're always here.
Yeah, except for on the Monday nights when Frederick has a Winston Proudey Board meeting.
Okay.
Or films the DRB.
Uh, don't you have DRB?
I don't know.
Yeah, you would have to.
You would have.
I believe that's the 17th.
Five Monday months.
Why don't we pick another date then?
Yeah.
That's the only one I know I'm here.
On August 1st, we almost always lose somebody.
Yeah.
The 24th? How's the 24th?
Of August.
No, the test is only one week, so...
We do the 31st, that's the first day of school, so I know I'm back. Hope to be on vacation.
Do you really wanna spend it now?
No, I don't, I would be home on the first day of school. Thank you for reminding me.
Okay, anyone, anyone not available on the 24th date?
Not available?
I have to check the calendar, there's a chance, I just don't know a day I'm back.
I'm most likely not here on the 24th.
Is that the first day of school?
No, it's a week, not the first day of school.
That's what I thought, I'll do you.
Why don't I send out some dates?
I was gonna teach this guy.
Will people do a doodle poll or do they find a way?
I certainly know, but I'll do it.
Okay, and I'll call you.
A what poll?
A doodle poll where you go in and say, "Yep, I can do this date." They're used to it.
It's a lot like this, but it's electronic.
It's useful.
It's useful, I'll give you that.
All right, awesome, possum, as they say.
Okay.
All right, so really, so how are we resolved this?
Land use business?
We have not resolved makeup day, right, we're gonna do doodle polls.
And what happens if we, if it's August and we don't do a makeup day and we push it into September, we do this at our September meeting?
I think this is where we need to kind of be coordinating with the town manager and the select board.
Yeah, yeah, because it may be important for us to do it in August rather than waiting.
It might, it might not be, though. So, and if it's not and it's August, then they're gonna be back for a September meeting.
And if we have changes to make, does that mean we have to have another public meeting after that?
Not necessarily. It depends on how big the changes.
Okay. So, so we can just make it in bulk and then pass it to the select board?
Depends on how big.
Yeah, yeah.
And when the doodle poll is sent, we'll have a summary of all the other dates that we've discussed. Is there anything else regarding the land use that we need to discuss?
Um, I had a couple of minor things. There seems to be a little bit of consternation about the water and recreation zoning district, where we've talked with people who have property in it and I think there, I think part of it is the name and people think that it's, you know, a no-bill zone, can't develop there, and that's not at all what's going on. So I had a suggestion of if we could possibly change the name to the waterfront district, and I can pull up a map. But if we, if we take out Pleasant Valley Reservoir and make that as an overlay, because that's not...
It's not, it's not an area that's ever gonna be subjected to development while we have the reservoir.
And then also, we would need to remove the retreat trails, but those are part of the institutional PD, so those, those can come out as well and be put in that, and then all the rest of the parcels are actually on water.
Is there anything lost by putting the retreat trails in out of that district?
No, because they have an Act 250 permit and a lot of the land is conserved anyway, so...
We started...
Are there, we started with...
We started, I remember when we put it in.
We put them in because of the recreation aspect.
Right, but, but also, I mean, are there private parcels within that, though, that we wanna have?
No, the private parcels that I think are in the rural residential that are in there. So we'll just take the retreat, we only took the retreat trails that are conserved and stuff and put them in.
Is there anyone who doesn't like that idea? Are we all in an agreement to change the name?
Yes.
There you go, all right. So, I also did, trying to fill out the meeting, I did three test case scenarios. I don't know if you wanna go through them, they're not particularly long, but if you want...
Let's start with one.
Yeah.
That was a very, that was a warning, I think.
Okay.
Better be good.
So, I'm gonna move.
You okay? So what did we agree to change it to, Sue?
What if it's... And Brandy thought it was a good plan, too.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you want to get the lights, too?
Uh, you might.
Yeah.
This is, um, Dutton's out on Route 9 in the rural business district. I'm just showing you the picture of the building and the plot of the site plan.
Is that all right, Jeff?
That's the rear, this is the front and that's the rear. So this is in the rural business zoning district. Doesn't show up all over, great. Okay, so this is Marlborough, Route 9, north. There's two, I know it's, it's difficult to... Sorry. There are parking spaces here. There's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
So, I'm sorry, where is this?
This is, um, Dutton Farm on Route 9.
Looking at it from the back isn't a bad...
It's across the street from Dutton Drive.
And, and the purpose of this is to show us how this would be developed under the new zoning.
Yeah, how does it fit under the new zoning? So, um, these are two lots together that are 1.66 acres. Rural business requires 1.5 acres, so that's about the lot size we're looking at. Required 180 frontage, this exceeds that with 370 feet of frontage. The building footprint, so there's the building and then there's a greenhouse and combined it's 9,800 square feet. And the maximum building footprint in this district is 12,000.
Is this the greenhouse right here?
Yes.
Yes.
So this is still...
That's the building.
What's this? Is that the other lot where they put their...
It's a single-story building.
I think that's existing, there is no building there.
It says single-story woodshed building.
Yeah.
So that is part of the building, then?
It's not really there.
Oh, there's no building there.
Maybe that's what they planned and they never...
It's not there.
It's not there.
Really?
The Dutton Farm's down on Route 9.
The split area, all right.
See, it's not here.
Yeah, okay.
Right.
Let's see, the floor area ratio, it's a 0.2 max for the district and this comes in under that, so that complies. It appears that the lot coverage applies and that the front setback, that all the setbacks apply. It was difficult to measure because these 11 by 17 plants get shrunk down and then you can't scale it off right, but it's pretty close. If it's, the side setbacks might be a little small, it's supposed to be 20 feet, I think it's more in the 15 foot range, but there's definitely room to have sided a building like that, but the front setback does work.
So are we thinking with this development that this is a good example of a nicely developed parcel that would meet these standards because they're also logically developed for a nice site plan?
Yeah, this generally fits, the one area, there would be a little bit more landscaping in the front and there's a little bit too much pavement in the front. So the idea would be to have a little bit more of a buffer there and less pavement, I mean, this one, it's a little weird, there's some wet area in the back, it's not showing up as a wetland, but, you know, I think you could have sided parking in a different manner, but...
Right, I think, I think what we see here, which we would see in other commercial and mixed use districts more generally, is that while the structure may be sensitive to the character of the neighborhood or whatever, the general standard of the landscaping and parking leaves something to be desired. And I think that's around operations and maintenance as much as it is anything else, so it's the ease of snow plowing and it's the ease of vehicles entering and exiting the lot, and then it is that thing from retail where they want to show as many cars in the front as possible so that it queues for passes by that the store is open. And so, there's always that tension there between good land use planning and what retail property owners would like, and we'll be drawing the line somewhere.
So these, so the new zoning are little tweaks that just make a more sensitive design for their own operation?
Right, a more serious commitment to landscaping.
Yes.
Which, when done well, will combine with carefully designed parking that will separate pedestrian movement across the lot from vehicle movement across the lot, and the access points to the road are controlled more tightly, and the parking is off to the side or the rear, and that the facade of the building has a presence on the street where it's practical that contributes to the streetscape in its own right, so...
Yeah, and this is a good, I mean, it's got a porch, it's got various roof pitches and roof lines, so this is a good...
It's made from materials and finishing in a way that's consistent with the overall guidelines for the district. Arguably agricultural in appearance and so forth, but the one area where it would be reviewed more tightly is landscaping and parking.
Landscaping and parking, what happens, yeah, between the street and the building.
Now, you know, and it's important for us to, you know, without wanting to drag this out too much, the one kind of thing that we're gonna hear from is that the plow truck is moving at 40 miles an hour at this point, and a 40 mile an hour plow truck with a 14, 14 foot plow is gonna make a bow wave of snow that spreads about 30 feet from the tip of the plow. And so, you won't, there won't be a lot of enthusiasm for moving the building dramatically closer to the road, and then that combines with then their desire to have parking in front of the building.
We're not asking them to move it forward here, this is, this is good.
Right.
It's 40.
Is it?
It's 40.
I had a drink. This is hard Thanksgiving.
I'm gonna chat on that road.
And then, just real quickly, because this came up at this life board meeting, is it...
It's a long way from public.
A good example of a cottage cluster PUD, I just flipped it the wrong way, but this is Black Mountain Estates.
Oh, right.
Up off of Black Mountain.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
And it kind of gets pretty close to what our cottage cluster PUD, so this is Black Mountain Road that goes up to Royal Landing. This is the driveway coming in and there's a loop, there's a community house here. These units are around 1,100 square feet, there might be some that are bigger, and I think our rights say they need to be under 200 square feet.
They're all single story.
They're all single story, they, some of these are but open space, not all of them, they don't quite meet there, and I think we're viewing, we're interested in a little bit more of a clustering of them than what this is, but the density is on target here. For this, the underlying zoning is rural residential, this is a 33 unit development, they would be allowed up to 38 dwelling units here. So, there's passive recreation going on, there's, you know, again, the open space would be better, we want a better design under the proposed regulations, but this is, you know, it's getting at the cottage cluster PUD.
I thought by then, there's some sort of sign that says private road or something like that, is that, are people, public, they're gonna go in?
No, well, it's under construction, there are residents already, there are one or two people that have already moved in.
Oh, really?
Yep, and so, the early good discount.
And there was a house that was there already also.
I think, I believe that there's no driveway, that you see, that's on the sign saying private road.
This is, but, you know, they put a sidewalk in on one side of the road, they actually did narrow down the street, I think it's 11 foot street. There's a sidewalk that comes all the way down to Black Mountain Road, there's street trees, so...
Yeah, they did a lot of work on that entrance road.
Is this right, it's like right, it's very close to Route 5?
Yeah, you go over the slight.
The second left there.
Yeah. You go over 91.
It's just beyond 91, you're right, at the, on the way of load planning.
So that's the second illustration?
Yep.
Yep.
I'll entertain a third.
More challenging to do because this property doesn't exactly have frontage, so this is the marina. Um, this was rebuilt after the fire. I'm just showing you the elevations first because building design wise, it's, it's good, and it meets the regulations. This is about a 50, around 6, 5944 is the square feet is the footprint, we allow 12,000 max in the neighborhood center, so that's good. Meets it, it meets the floor area ratio, it's under by quite a bit, coverage is good. They share parking, which is good, I don't have a site plan, but anyway, to the building design, it's two stories, it's got a cube cupola. This is the, the entrance side, and the one area that, I'm guessing that this is over 20 feet and it is a blank wall, so we would be looking for some landscaping, but if you look on the flip side of it, this is, this is the side on the West River and the Retreat Meadows, and this is not blank wall, so it's kind of a good example of how they took advantage of their waterfront location.
So you might be willing to waive that requirement if you received an application such as this with a really good explanation as to the energy standards for the building, so remember the...
That's where their handicap parking is actually.
And that's their back.
And it's...
If they're back for the bar and a kitchen, so it's not an area that you're gonna want to put windows in anyway.
And there are some perennial plantings here, but...
Yeah, and so, the one, yeah, so in terms of, to meet the energy standards for the building envelope, they've maximized the one side for all the windows, but it means, and got a lot of windows, but it means that on some level they're looking to have an area where they don't have any windows so that they can meet energy standards, which plays, that means, so in other words, if somebody was gonna make an argument like that, that may be something that the DRB would find unacceptable.
And there are waivers for that sort of thing within the plan?
Because if you punch a hole in a wall for a window, it has an impact on the energy, on the energy allowed out.
Yeah.
Parking is...
Yes, exactly.
Parking is good, this has a four foot setback on the West River, so that's an issue. If this was an undeveloped site, they would need to have the 25 foot riparian setback, so again, this was preexisting, it was able to, to build in its footprint, but new development actually couldn't be as close as it is here, and that would be, that's the no build area. This would also be conditional use because it is within 50 feet of the, of the water.
Right.
And so, you know, there's, there's more going on, so this actually would be, if this was an undeveloped site, this would be more challenging, because it's a pretty small parcel.
Right.
But building design works, the parking, they've got shared parking, so they have a reduced amount, and that would be allowed under the proposed. The landscaping here is limited to perennials, it's not necessarily problematic given it's such an open site, but but dimensional wise, the riparian area is the biggest problem here.
Right.
Would need conditional use, you're allowed to have decks and patios in the riparian buffer, the wider 50 foot area, so, you know, they've definitely got that going on here. That's not a problem in terms of...
Good, yeah, assuming it's an undeveloped site, the orientation of the building, you'd almost turn it around through 90 degrees, almost something like that, you might stack it a little taller, and then have a deck jutting out and across the water there, but...
So, those are the...
Well, those are three good illustrations.
They're more recent, you know, they were developed in the 2000s, so mid 2000s on them.
Thanks, that's great.
Yeah, okay, so, I'll entertain the motion to adjourn.
I will adjourn. At 7:25.
Very good.
Thank you, Mark.